Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting of April 10th, 2025. This meeting will be conducted as a hybrid. It will be an in-person meeting. It has a Zoom component. Zoom meeting ID for the record, 835-812-09301. I recognize in attendance myself, Joe Parisi, Catherine Slicky, Michael Nyman, and Ron Wilson. And I declare we have a quorum. Our first order of business is the approval of the consent agenda for the decisions at 29 Cliff Road and Severn and Periwinkle Lane. Need a motion?
I have reviewed the two decisions and I move the approval for your signature.
Second.
What's your maiden seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. We have four hearings tonight. The first hearing is the petition of James Pratt seeking a special permit under 2.4.3 and a use variance under 2.3.4 subsection 10 to change, extend, or alter an existing nonconforming use to allow for the sale of used motor vehicles at 95 Rear Maplewood Avenue. Anyone? Everybody good? I'm good.
All right, I'll be good.
Okay.
Good evening.
A reminder, everybody, we get to name and address first, and then we can hold the microphone right to you because the people at home won't be able to hear.
All right. Shane the Flam, I own Grove Street Auto on Jimmy Pratt's property on 95 Maplewood Ave.
And now you're just doing, you can, I'll ask questions after you say what you want to say, sorry.
I know, it's, I'm just ready for you.
Go ahead, you can tell us about your project.
So we're looking to get a dealer's license for our business financially for one, but mainly for that. We just have a lot of vehicles that come to the shop that people don't want anymore. They're blown up, they're going to go to the junkyard. So this would give us, my family and I, an opportunity to repair these vehicles and sell them legally instead of like sending them to the junkyard. So I think, I believe I have my dealer's license on my last property. Not that I sold many cars, so I don't plan on selling a million cars. I mostly one or two in the parking lot. Start off with one when a vehicle comes in to be repaired, and if they don't want it, I may buy it and repair it and sell it. That's it.
Right now, you're just doing auto body work and repair work?
Yeah, automotive, yeah.
Yeah.
Just repair.
Yeah. When I went down there today, there were just a lot of cars, there were a lot of cars and trucks around and whatnot. So when most of the ones I saw, you know, clients of yours were coming in to have those?
Yes, exactly.
Leaving them to be repaired and whatnot?
Yeah.
So how long have you had that business on this, at this site?
Close to 14 years, maybe.
Yeah, and was it an auto? Did you get a, did you get a use variance to have an auto motor?
Yes, I did, yes. I was that, I was at 105 Maplewood Ave. And that's where my, my business started there. So I had the opportunity to move to Jimmy Pratt's property. And we just started there and we've been there about 14 years.
So that building that's in front, that's on Maplewood Avenue? Is that parking area like behind their house, like behind the house that kind of looks like it's part of your lot? Is that for the parking for the residences?
Yes, exactly.
And then you park to the side and behind?
To the side and all in the back.
Okay. And how many parks would you, do you generally have, would you have prepared and for sale?
Oh, well, I'll start off with one.
Yeah.
Like I say, I had my license before and I didn't reapply because I didn't really sell any cars.
You're not going to be dealership, you're just going to take cars that people are kind of junking and you're going to put?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
You'd be selling used cars, okay.
Yes, exactly.
What's about three spots?
Yeah, that was another question.
Say it again, Jim.
You saw, only chose and mentions three, three cars maximum.
Yeah, maximum for sure.
Yeah, you wouldn't have any more than three cars for sale on your?
Probably never, ever.
So, so if we approve this, can we set a restriction like that or not?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, because of the space dedicated to it?
Yeah.
On the application? How many was it?
Do you have a? He could have a limited number of cars for sale. Yeah, so is this a use variance or is this a modification of a prior variance? I mean, on one hand, so for a use variance, it's not practical to use the property for what it's owned for, which is residential use.
Well, it's a commercial building. It's a commercial building.
Yeah, it's clearly a commercial building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Commercial building, yeah. And that use is already on the lot. So I guess my question is, are we modifying a prior variance or are we granting a second variance for the sale of cars?
There's a separate line, there's auto repair and there's auto sale. It's a separate use in the zoning one, so it would be a new, a new use.
I have no more questions.
I'm just not sure what the criteria we use to judge, judge these types of change of use. It is a residential zoned area.
Yep. Maybe just a little history on the building. It's never been a residential building. It was a previous to Shane. It was a woodworking shop. Previous to that, it was the Cape M Box Company, which made wooden boxes to pack fish and ship it to the airport. And that was since, I want to say in the early 60s. So it's always been sort of an industrial use. And he's operated there for quite a while without, very busy shop, it appeared, a lot of trucks, but I haven't been known, made note of any complaints, so.
The standard for, the standard for a use variance is that it is, cannot be used for its zone use, which is residential, so it's not really practical.
Yeah, I think history argues that it can't be used for residential because it's never been used residential, right?
Yeah, it's got that big commercial building there.
Yes, yes.
But it's not a change from a residential use?
No, it's currently.
To a commercial, this is an additional?
An additional commercial use.
Commercial use.
Yes.
When I visited today, it looks like the spaces, you know, it's almost that whole front area is, is open to the, to the yard, the paved area. There's, there's no curb cut. And I looked at where those spaces are and I'm saying, well, now that, now if you park cars there, you're going to have to drive around them and you've got all that space in the back where you've got cars.
So.
It may not be germane, but it just seems like an awfully odd place to stick the cars.
So, yeah, maybe I'm just missing where the cars are.
But you do have 38 feet from the building to the property line. So if I parallel park a vehicle, it's only six feet wide. The length rise is less than 20 feet, so that still leaves 18 feet of roadway to get through. I don't really have to put it there, I just thought that's where you would want it.
I don't know if I can?
You could condition with?
You can condition that, but I, I would be more, more in favor of this if the, the spaces were behind the building. That it, that, no, the parking spaces are right there on the road.
No, the road's here.
No, this is the road.
This is unnamed roadway.
That's the?
Maplewood Avenue.
There's no access, there's no access from this side.
No, there's, yeah.
Oh, I see, you're saying Maplewood?
Maplewood's over here.
It's over here, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You've got the drive.
That unnamed road is right, everybody, to get to those other houses too.
And you put them behind your building as opposed?
Oh, yes, I could. The reason why I picked that spot was I thought that they would have to be seen from the street for some reason. I don't know if I saw that or read it or someone told me that, so I put it there so if people were driving by, they could see the cars. Not for selling them, just because I thought that's what I required to be for that.
All right, you can, you can have a seat and we're going to take some public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, anyone in favor? If you're on Zoom, you hit your raise hand button. If you're here in the hall, come forward, give your name and address and tell us what you think. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. I represent the owner of 89 and 93 Maplewood Avenue, Woodnut LLC. And as you know, I don't often speak in opposition to applications before your board, but this is a situation where there's potential harm to the residential units that are immediate abutters, including my client, and the requested use variance, I would argue, does not meet the legal criteria. I do want to make it clear, my client is not opposed to this particular applicant. He runs a nice establishment. However, you can't condition your variance, this grant of the variance, that he remain the owner. It goes with the property and so it goes to any future owner, then we don't know whether or not they will continue to run a respectable operation. So there was a use variance that was granted in 1981, and then it was modified in 2009 to allow his welding fabrication, auto repair, and office. Now he's seeking a use variance to have an ability to sell cars, and I would say that it is a use variance because it's a separate category. The property, if you've been down there, it's densely populated, it's R5. It's accessed by a private way that's abutted by six residential units. If you looked at the backyard of 95 Maplewood, you saw a lot of children's toys out there and it directly abuts that property. Sale of car is likely to increase traffic and people may be browsing, test drives, all of those types of things, so there's more in and out and potentially people who aren't familiar with the neighborhood or the residences around there. It also doesn't meet the legal standard. Under 1.7.2, it is actually that there cannot be any other feasible or economic use of the property. It's not merely that it can't be used for residential purposes, it's that there's no other economic use that can be made. Here, we have a legal feasible economic use that is being made of the property, and I would suggest that there is no allowance to add another use, particularly one that is not allowed in the R5 or any other residential district in the city. And in fact, it's only allowed in four out of 15 of the zoning districts in the city. So it's clear that the city believes that this is a use that should be strictly in a business district. And again, my client isn't concerned with this applicant, but this variance follows the land, and so I respectfully request that you deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Close public testimony and go into discussion by the board.
Or thoughts on Deb's comments on it as a viable use?
Yeah, no other. I mean, it's currently?
Her argument is it has another use that's, that, so I'm not, I'm not agreeing with her necessarily, I'm really asking for?
My question would be, who's the arbiter of, you know, other economic use? In other words, he may need this extra revenue to keep his business. So who decides?
We do.
Whether there's an, right, whether there's an economic value?
I'm weighing is what I'm doing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I don't see why we can't restrict it to three spaces and, and I don't, you know, a different operator comes in there, I don't see free, being able to sell three used cars at a time. I know there's, I know the variance, the use variance goes with the property. I have a deal with a business down in Woburn, their use variances do not go with the property. A change of ownership, you have to reapply. It's pretty risky, I've been through it. And so, yeah, it would go with the property, I know.
Yeah, three, I mean, this sort of thing, I'm just listening again to Deb's argument against that, it doesn't seem that, so I don't like where the cars are situated on the, on the lot, on the map. I would like them sort of more in with the cars that they're using, you know, to work on and stuff in their regular business. So it could be anywhere along the back or over along the back left-hand side or something like that. I don't really like them where they are. But I think just addressing how much more traffic, so this is a, this is an auto body repair, not auto body, this is a, you know, a repair shop. There's a lot of traffic in and out of there on a regular basis. I mean, they're regular clients, but there's a lot of traffic in there, in and out. How much more traffic for the sale of three cars tops? It does, it just seems pretty minimal to me, that's all.
I do. And again, the people that are there, they either drop their car off the night before or in the morning, that's one trip. They come back at the end of their workday and pick up their car. So, yeah, there are a lot of vehicles, he runs a big shop there.
Yes.
You know, he's got a lot of young mechanics working in there. I know his own kids seem to be involved. And Shane's no, he's no old timer, so he's going to be around, but.
I think a determination has already been made that this property is a residential use, it's not economically viable for a residential use. There's an auto body shop. I look at it, even though it's a separate category, I look at it as in a, you know, a companion. And I, I think it, I, I do think it's, it's a slight expansion on what's already happening there. I, I, I don't think it's going to be a huge impact on the neighborhood. So I, I would be in favor of granting the relief request.
I think if we can restrict it to three, and if we can get those cars in behind, however we do that, you know, in our decision or on this map or whatever, I think I'm?
We could just say they have to be kept past that dotted line.
Yes, which is, which is what he uses now.
That's where they park the vehicles against that back fence.
At the rear of the building.
Seemed like when we looked at it. So they would, they would need to be on the back rear property fence and limited to a maximum of three cars for sale.
I'd say that I'm persuaded by Attorney Eliason's argument about this expansion of this business in a residential district. I'd have a very difficult time moving this. Should, should we suggest that they need four votes and if this were continued until some of our other members are available?
If you think, if you think about that side of Maplewood Ave, okay, it is a residential zoning district, but this place has been there operating for a long time. If you go to the right of this little roadway, there used to be a appliance store, okay? Then you go down two more houses, Seraphine's and the other one, and then there was a bakery. And then you go two more houses and there was a restaurant. So business use, and then go the other way, you got, you got Strong Leather, a manufacturing facility. So in this block of Maplewood, uninterrupted from Cleveland all the way to grocery, there's traditionally been at least five businesses and one of them very substantial size. So, and then all the way up and down Maplewood is all sorts of, so I don't really, you know, I think they operate pretty well.
It's not zoned as mixed use. And, you know, it's, the, it sounds like it was a nice little business district, little shops, but how long ago was that? You know, I, I think I can only look at it in the current state, and if I?
It was before 2020.
It was a lot before 2020. That's just the way I feel.
Yeah.
I, I might need to think about it, but at this moment, I can't support this.
What do you think?
Let him withdraw if you want, he doesn't have votes. Right, there's only, there's four of us and one of us is not going to vote in favor.
Shane, can you come forward?
I did want to say one thing about if the, if the building was sold to somebody else that they, they may not have a good business like I have. Well, earlier today, we already signed like a purchase and sales, but get financing to purchase it anyways, so it's never going to be sold outside of my family if we purchase it, so.
Are attempting to buy the building?
What's that?
You say you are attempting to buy the building?
Yes.
From Jim?
Yep.
Yeah, the issue Shane, that we talked about, I mean, you don't have to agree with it, but the issue that we're talking about is that if we grant you a use permit, it goes with the property. We, we can't restrict it like we can other kinds of things that we grant.
One thing, one thing we allow, in fairness, because there's only four members here, and it takes four votes, so normally there's five people voting, but you don't have four votes tonight. So we would allow you to withdraw the application, okay? And then you wouldn't restrict yourself. If we turn you down, you can't reapply for two years. If you, if you withdraw, you can rethink your plans and apply again. Up to you, but I don't, we don't have the votes to approve you.
I would have to withdraw then, but it would have been nice if everyone came, I've been waiting months and months and months and months to get here and there's not enough members to vote, so.
That's the way it works sometimes, Shane.
Oh, I know, but it doesn't help me.
They are just, I mean, we all try to be here whenever we possibly can.
Yeah, I understand.
Sometimes it just works.
Yeah, I guess I withdraw and after reapply.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion?
On the petition of James Pratt seeking a special permit pursuant to GZO 2.4.3 and the use variance pursuant to 2.3.4, I would move withdrawal of the application without prejudice.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Proved. The withdrawal's allowed. The next application is the petition of Four River Road LLC seeking a special permit under 1.8 and 1.9 to demolish an existing nonconforming single-family home and replace it with a two-family dwelling with variances pursuant to 1.7 for lot area, lot area per dwelling, lot width, lot coverage, lot frontage, front side and rear setbacks at Four River Road.
Deb, before you get started, I just want full disclosure here. I am going to hear this. I wasn't quite sure if I was going to hear it when I first, when it first came before me. I did a major renovation on this building in 1997, early in my building career, Niman Construction. I know many of the neighbors, and I maintained that building until 2014, when I closed Niman Construction. All my work was primarily with the older sister of the three sisters who used to own the property, Susan Lannan was her name. I barely, I only met Pam Stuppi, I think, one time, probably in 1997 or 1998. And I did some research, you know, online assessors and so on, and I realized it had been, so the two oldest, the two sisters had sold Pam, and now her children have inherited the property, it seems, and they're the ones doing the renovation. I've never met any of them, so I don't feel like my decision would be prejudiced because of my involvement, just with the property. So I am going to hear this, just so you know.
Thank you for your disclosure, Mr. Nyman.
Wish to proceed?
Yes, if I could be made a panelist? Thank you very much. For the record again, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. The applicant is Four River Road LLC. Hayes Stuppi is on Zoom representing the family. The designer is Poor and Company, and Mr. Jonathan Poor is here representing the designer. The contractor is Andrew Stevens. And as I said, the property is located at Four River Road, and I'll share my screen. This is the property that we're talking about at Four River Road. Most of the variances that are being sought are for existing conditions. Originally, this was only one lot with the house next door at Six River Road, and they shared a large front porch that spanned both houses. There was also, I'm told, a cottage to the rear of Four River Road that was destroyed many years ago by a fire and never rebuilt. In 1988, the ZBA allowed the two lots to be separated under GZO 3.1.5, creating many of the existing nonconformities. Because the new lots were created under that section of the GZO, the lot and the house are not grandfathered, and the Stuppis need to seek the variances for all existing conditions because they are changing the use from a single family to a two-family. So above are the listed existing nonconformities. There is one new nonconformity in the rear yard of two feet, five inches. And we are also seeking a special permit under 2.3.1.3 for a change in use from a two-family, from a one-family to a two-family with exterior changes. This is, just to give you a general overview of what's happening, everything is in red because the existing home is going to be torn down. There was a flood in 2023 and there's no ability to save the house. However, the main house is going to be built on the same footprint of the existing house. The changes are shown in purple, and this is a rear addition that will be added to the property. It improves the left side variance or left side nonconformity. You can see there are two buildings in yellow that are currently on the property that are going to be removed. So the left side variance is currently a couple inches and it will increase to almost six feet. There is a small encroachment to the rear corner, and that's the two feet, five inches. And then with regard to the right side, it is mostly conforming. There is a slight corner encroachment, and then the portion of the building that attaches to the main building, it also encroaches slightly. You can see that this is the setback line, the black dotted line. It's virtually impossible to create a house within that setback, and so what the architect has done is to make sure that we're staying within the footprint of what's there, and then the new addition is going to be built into the hillside that is there to make its, you know, minimal impact on the neighbors. The Stuppi family is seeking to demolish the single-family home and replace it, as I said, they want to accommodate the four Stuppi siblings and their families. The main part of the house and the street-facing side will be constructed to look very similar to the existing home. There'll also be the addition to the rear built into the slope. This is a family generational home, it's been in the family since 1809, seven generations. The Stuppi family have been part of the Anasquam community for those generations. Pamela Stuppi. Pamela Stuppi and her family spent summers in Anasquam with their grandparents, who were year-round residents. And Ms. Stuppi then continued that tradition for her children, including Hayes. And it's now her children's wish to continue it for the next generation. Unfortunately, Ms. Stuppi passed away and is not able to see her dream come to fruition, but she was happy to know that the family home would be preserved. The Stuppi's are faced with the same dilemma that many families face who have these generational homes. As their families expand, people grow up, get married, have children, the house no longer works for a gathering space for everyone. And in 2023, as I said, there was a major flood that devastated the first floor. And that is why the property has to be completely demolished and replaced. But this, however, presented an opportunity for the Stuppi's to redesign the house so that it would allow for family gatherings and still provide privacy for the individual family units. Because it has two kitchens, it's considered a two-family. Um, it allows them to also correct an erosion and drainage issue that has long plagued the property. And even without the rear addition, all of the terracing and patio work would have to be done because that is what is going to correct the drainage and the erosion. And none of that would require zoning approval. It's also part of the Conservation Commission Order of Conditions to do that work. The Stuppi's and their consultants have engaged with the neighbors regarding this project numerous times since the flood in 2023. Um, there are three main times when they talked to the neighbors. The first was shortly after the flood, when everybody wanted to know what they were going to do. Then when they filed the notice of intent with Conservation, and again, when they filed with the zoning board. They've also talked many more times in person via email with the immediate neighbors. Um, the neighbors at nine Arlington Street, Mr. Young, as well as the Hoopers, who are both behind this property. Mr. Poor has also met with the immediate neighbors to the rear when the plan was first created in 2024. He went, met with them to go over the plan, took pictures, came back with renderings of what it would look like from their properties, and listened to their concerns and tried to address those. There were changes that were made, excuse me, made to the plans when it was possible to address the neighbors' concerns or to provide them with information when it was determined that the concerns were, were not well-founded. The main concern we heard from the neighbors was the fear that this would be a short-term rental. And there's no intention to use it that way. It's a family house. It's not conducive to frequent short-term rentals. And it's also not possible under the current ordinance. The current ordinance puts a cap of 500, and you have to have been registered by April 1st in order to get any grandfathering rights. And this unit isn't registered, so they'd have to wait in line if they even had any inkling of doing that. We would hope that that allays any of the neighbors' concerns about that issue. There are two letters of support that are in the file. And, um, what I'd like to do now is turn the presentation over to Mr. Poor to go into more detail about the plans and show you the drawings. Thank you.
Just wondered if I could be promoted to a panelist? So, um, so you can hear me okay?
As long as you're close to the mic.
Okay. So Deborah went over the, um, the, the basics of the, the project. So in addition to the flooding, as we took the building apart to correct the flooding and mold damage that occurred, uh, as a result, we also found that there were some older alterations, um, probably from 50, 60 years ago that were not structurally sound. And so when you combined the, the mold, the water damage, and the structural deficiencies, uh, we'd basically be rebuilding the, the building board by board if we tried to renovate it. So that's, that's a little bit more nuanced um, explanation of why we need to rebuild the building. So in addition to that, over the years, the, um, because of the sighting of the building, the water from the rear yard, because it's, it's relatively steep here, had been running against the back of the building, under the building, around the building, toward the neighbors, um, just in lots of uncontrolled ways. And so as Deborah mentioned, with the Conservation Commission process, we came up with um, a number of ways of managing the water on-site so that it, uh, didn't leave the site, and it also didn't run across River Road into the, into the wetlands, so. Um, so there's, there's a good amount of terracing occurring in the, in the rear yard here. There's a, a lower terrace and then an upper terrace. And then in addition to that, the building, the building additions also terrace. One of the challenges with this existing building is the rear uh, of the first floor is partially underground, so it's very difficult, it was very difficult, currently very difficult, to get out of that building, up to grade in a way that's, um, safe, comfortable, and also watertight, hence the, the reasons why the, the, uh, drainage issues. So we have a, a small addition across the back of the building here that, in a sense, creates the ability to, to correct that water problem and also get out of the building safely. And then, uh, as Deborah mentioned, the, they needed a, um, an additional space just for, for gathering, the, joining of the families. So there's a small, partially underground addition in the back here with basically a stair connector here. And the, uh, the rear eve of this building is roughly chest height, so that's how far underground this, this thing is. And, uh, and then there's some existing vegetation here. This is an existing mature you right here that is conveniently located to kind of shield the building and shield the, uh, terrace use for, for privacy. As Deborah mentioned, uh, we pretty much are, are following the, uh, the, the cues of the existing building. You can see on the left is existing, on the right is proposed. Ever so slight changes to the, to the roof line, but following the footprint, following the existing maximum height, following the ridge line. So, uh, very, very little vis- visible change to the front of the building. In addition, on the, uh, with the, the, uh, proposed addition in the rear, we tried to stay as mu- use as much as we could the, the, the existing footprints of the sheds that were back here. So there's an attached building here, there's a detached building here. We tried to sort of stay in those footprints and, and then wherever we came outside of those footprints, try to stay within the setbacks. The, uh, the building also, um, let's see if I can get a section here. This section's better. The, uh, you can see here that the topography in this, in the cross-section. And you can see in the back, it's a little faint here, but the grade comes up, up against the back of the building here, and then terraces down around it, terraces again. And you can see how far below grade this first floor is here as the, as the building slopes down. So, and then we, we endeavored to keep the, the, the roof as low as we possibly could, um, in the, uh, in the pavilion area. So, and then in addition to that, uh, we in the very rear part of the yard, in this area back here, this is all just landscaping, and this is, uh, what the neighbors look out at. So um, we endeavored to make that as, uh, so naturalized as possible, and even encouraged in our discussions with the neighbors, uh, encouraged agreements of use of that for access for gardening or, or, um, outdoor use. So because the, the Stuppi's really wanted to use the ta- the two terraces as their outdoor space and sort of think of the rear portion of the yard as kind of public space to give back visually to the neighbors. So I guess that's a quick summary. Um, I don't know whether the board has any questions about the, uh, the building itself.
Just before you, you, you close, uh, can you state your name and your address?
I'm so sorry. Jonathan Poor, Poor and Company, 315 Washington Street, Gloucester. My apology.
Oh, not at this time. Tape. So if you could mention that you're good to go on the flood zone, but just so we have it on the record.
Um, as far as we know, we are, and I would also, was intending to go through the legal requirements, if you would like me to do that also. Okay. Um, so yes, we are, the property is in the flood zone, but the house and the construction is all outside of the flood zone. And so although we haven't had, um, formal notice of that, we filed the application and anticipate that we are all set on that. Sorry. Trying to make you smaller, sorry. I was not doing a good job. With regard to the variances, the variances may be granted because, without substantial harm to the public good, and do not substantially undercut the purpose of the zoning ordinance. Except for the small variance in the rear yard, the only reason the variances are needed is because of the change in use. Um, there is substantial hardship due to lot shape, topography, soil conditions, and pre-existing conditions. The lot is narrow. It rises steeply in the rear and has, um, significant ledge in the rear. The rear addition was constructed to minimize its impact on the neighbors by being constructed into the existing hillside, and it falls within the jurisdiction of conservation, placing more restrictions on the construction. The FEMA flood zone encroaches into the front yard, and the house is outside of that flood zone. Two families are allowed in this district with a special permit when there are exterior changes, therefore it's consistent with the GZO.
So Deborah, remind me, the, the two and a half feet, where is that variance?
That is the rear left side. Would you like me to show the site plan?
If you don't mind. I mean, I'm looking at the site plan, but maybe you could just point it out to me.
Point on the pink outside of the.
It is right here. Appears to be frozen up there.
No. Ah, okay, I see it now. Thank you.
Sorry about that. It's not, my computer is not paying attention to me. With regard to the pre-existing conditions, the building was constructed before zoning. The current setbacks, as I showed you, make it virtually impossible to construct a new usable building within those setbacks. The encroachments are due to the original location and those created by separating the building. And the buildings on four and six River Road were so close together that there was no way to separate the lots without creating non-conformities. The GZO allowed those lots to be separated, and so it made them more conforming by now having one principal use on each lot, which is consistent with the ordinance, and therefore, um, something that is, uh, a, uh, favored by the city. For all these reasons, I would suggest the variances do not substantially undercut the purposes of the ordinance. With regard to the change in use, we must look at the criteria under 1.8.3. And I would suggest that the proposed change in use is in harmony with the intent and purpose of the ordinance that allows two-family residences. It will not adversely affect the neighborhood, the R20 district, or the city to such an extent that it outweighs the benefits. The social, economic, and community needs will be served by the change in use to a two-family. It adds more housing options for the city. It's consistent with this predominantly residential neighborhood, and it will allow the family to maintain its seven-generation-long relationship with Anasquam. It will also provide a home for extended family in multiple generations. Traffic flow and safety impact will be negligible. There is adequate conforming onsite parking, and adding one additional bedroom unit will not significantly increase the traffic. Utilities and other public services also will not be negatively affected. It's adequately served by city water and sewer. And again, one modest unit will not significantly increase the need for public services. The proposed two-family is consistent with neighborhood character and social structure. It's predominantly residential properties. A two-family is allowed under the ordinance, and it's largely constructed within the envelope of the existing home. The rear addition will not be visible from River Road, and the facade along River Road will be substantially the same. When you look at the home, you will look at it as if it is a single-family home. The qualities of the natural environment will not be affected. The project has been thoroughly vetted and approved by Conservation. Open space has been maximated, maximized to the extent possible, and it will be heavily vegetated, especially in the back. It's designed to adhere to the Rivers Act, even though that property is outside of that jurisdiction. And the new building will resolve the erosion and drainage problems that have plagued the property for decades. The potential fiscal impact will be positive. Um, the upgrades and improvements made to the property will likely increase its value and modestly add to the real estate taxes. And with regard to vulnerability to flooding, again, it is outside of the flood zone, and we expect that it'll be approved, um, under the ord- new ordinance. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and respectfully request that you grant the variances and the special permit.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Okay, will a public testimony? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. I'll raise your hand if you're online. Anyone in favor? None? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Please come forward. Remind your name and address for the record, and then tell us what you think.
Good evening. Peter Young, nine Arlington Street in Gloucester. Carolyn Roy, my partner, will be joining. I'll speak for about a minute, and then, uh, he'll speak for a couple. Twenty-eight years in nine Arlington, full-time, year-round. Um, we do appreciate that the owners will be fixing the derelict house. It's been, uh, derelict for a couple of years now, so that's all good. I'd like to thank the board for, uh, your time and efforts. Uh, I get it. I'm on the Gloucester Waterways Board, so, uh, thank you. So, for us, the scale of the plans is the issue that we have. And Carolyn will speak to that. Y'all been to Anasquam, uh, probably? It's pretty tight there. Homes are cheek to jowl. And what was mentioned, Deb had mentioned that, um, the visual from River Road. And what was mentioned, Deb had mentioned that the visual from River Road really won't change, but they sure will change for us because we're in back.
Carolyn?
I live at 9 Arlington also. I'm Carolyn Roy. And the points I want to make is that it's too big, it's too close, and it's not right. In the drawing, we're the house, the little boxes that you see outside of the diagram. We are two feet and four feet away from the property line. It would be hard to be closer than that. How that occurred is, at one point, the two homes were connected, and the grandfather, some time ago, sold the property behind the house of the two houses on 4 and 6 River Road, sold one of the lots to a friend for a dollar. And in 1947, they moved our house there, and that's why it barely made it over the property line. And it's actually encroaches a little bit into the public alley, but that's all that separates the two properties. So this is in our backyard, too. So why this is important also is that the character of Anasquam is at risk. We have charming, hip-roofed houses that are Federal-style, and they're from the 1700s and the early 1800s. The next house over...